Some areas I think we can strengthen, I've talked to advisory, I hope to work with Sharon and David. It was really a group effort to pull this off. It was using a lot of our planning documents, climate initiatives that we've had, hazard mitigation, municipal vulnerability, these are all topics they discussed that were new in the areas. So I actually think we did very well with that. The, what we're also looking to do with this bond is because the interest rates were so favorable, I looked into could we refinance any of our existing bonds? And our 2007 and 2010 bonds could be refinanced. So I had looked to do that. What that also helps us with is right now, all of our bonds were timed to have the principal payments due in May because we were on a semi-annual basis and the interest due in November. And I was trying to split it out that now we're quarterly, I didn't want to have to have everything due in May because we also have our Dover Sherburne bond assessment due in May. So by moving the 2007 and 10s into this refinancing and then switching to principles now due in September for the new bonds, it's going to help our cash flow a little bit. And we're actually saving just over $147,000 on the interest rates for those two bonds by combining them into this one. So we went out for bid on 5,675,000. We received eight bids. And the range, the highest was 1.398 and the award went to 1.077091% was our total interest cost on the net.
Almost money.
Sorry.
You know, I was joking, you're almost paying us to borrow money.
It's fantastic. I was thrilled when I saw eight bids, all in the ones, I was shocked. So I think the decision was right to go for the bond and to do it this time, you know, locks us in and refinancing the other ones saves us some significant money.
You did a nice job Heidi, spreading the maturities out though, phasing the maturities of the bonds. It looked very well thought out, I thought.
We hope, yeah, that I have to say would go to our financial advisor who helped with that.
Yeah.
So I'm asking for a motion toward general obligation bond.
Shows your name, Annie Amision Thompson on this thing.
Oh, sorry.
I think it's someone not muted.
Sorry, somebody didn't mute.
Oh, okay. So I'm asking for a motion toward the general obligation bond of $5,580,000 to Piper Sandler and Company as submitted to the town on August 24th, 2020 and dated September 10th, 2020.
So I'll move. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much Heidi.
Sure. One last thing, I did include, there's a disclosure agreement that the town will need to be looking at. This, it's new requirements the SEC has and Bond Council had put a draft proposal together. So I don't need a vote on it tonight, but I would, I did have it included in your packet and I would like it if someone could take a look at it and maybe we could discuss it one of the next meetings to get it formally adopted.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at it. We just took my company public and all the NASDAQ and SEC reporting obligations. We've been looking at these types of agreements for the last three months. So I'd be happy to take a close look at it.
Oh, that would be wonderful. No, and then if I could arrange to get signatures, I'm happy to drive to your homes this weekend with the documents because you're going to have about 20 bond individual wants to sign.
I can stop by Town Hall. I'm happy to stop by Town Hall.
Me too.
Okay. Okay. I'll just offline reach out to you and then see if we can coordinate a time.
If you can just leave it in the Selectments Office, excuse me, the Select Board's Office for our signature, that would be great.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everyone signs the correct numbers and spots. There's quite a few. So, thank you.
So Heidi.
Yes.
I want to heap some praise on you for two things. One is the AAA bond rating. And the second is to doing this bond now when interest rates are so low and combining these additional past borrowings and refinancing. I think that's all brilliant and I want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
I agree with Paul. Heidi, you're doing a fantastic job and we're, we're very happy like to maintain our AAA bond rating and to do these, you're, you're very forward thinking and we really appreciate the work you're doing for the town.
Well, there's a good team behind me. So thank you.
Yeah, I think as we've been on record recently, we're really pleased with the finance team and the work that the three finance departments are doing. So thank you.
Thank you Heidi. Best treasurer since 1977.
Okay, I'll take that.
Geez, I wonder what happened then.
All right. So we do have a motion and a second on a board. Is he all in favor Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Chuck?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Very good.
Heidi, if it's easier for you to drive it around so that we don't screw up the signatures, that's fine too.
Yeah.
A range of time for us all to come in.
Whatever works easiest for you, let us know.
Okay. So I'll just coordinate tomorrow with you and if I can get it done by Monday, that'd be great.
Yep.
Maybe popping in on a Saturday morning is, would be easy, but you figure it out.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to agenda item number three. Agenda item number three is relative to Article 12 of the annual town meeting that we just closed. Apply prudent investor standard for library trusts. And this year we're going to talk to Jackie Morris as well. She has a certified copy of this. David, who's speaking on this?
Um, I can or Jackie.
Basically to go to the legislature, correct?
Right. Each, each year we have to review the warrant for those items that pass that need to be put to the legislature. And it's just, it's more of a notice and request that they introduce it as a bill, you know, so the letter goes to our delegation and then we keep in touch with that. And then Jackie has all the certifications of those bills that, I mean, those warrant articles that need to be certified. And she forwards those as well. So that letter would go to David Linsky and Rebecca Roush with the attachment of the certified article that it refers to.
And that was the email that came in later, like was I think earlier today, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So simply to approve the, approve the letter, authorize you to sign the letter?
So moved.
Zach.
Um, one quick note, I already sent this to Diane. The letterhead needs to be updated. It was on the old letterhead with George's chair and me as vice chair without His Highness Eric Johnson listed as the chair.
The version I.
I'll check that. I'll check that and redo that over on the, and make the change to Chuck. I'm sorry about that.
All right. So all in favor Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Chuck?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Okay, very good.
We had also Eric, we had Brian Connolly and Hank Roush here from the library, but I don't think you guys are okay. We don't need to get any input.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Yep.
Okay, very good. Uh, the item number four is a COVID-19 update from Zach Ward and Darryl Beardsley. It's hard to see.
So you're just going to get me. Zach has a training event that he's helping to run, I believe.
Okay.
So we don't have a lot that's new. We have things that we're going to be working on next week, but I'll wait until we actually have a chance to discuss that. But for the moment, we've been still quite focused on the schools and getting ready for that. And I just wanted to remind everyone that when we're talking about precautionary behaviors around COVID-19, it's not based in fear, but it's based in practicality because I think we all would like to live a little bit more of the life that we used to have. And we really can't be cycling in and out of surges because that's just more disruptive to everything. So I'm going to borrow some words about the school situation from William Hanage or Hannage, who's an epidemiologist at Harvard University and he's been, he's written some things about school openings and how yes, going back to school will spread the coronavirus, but opening can still happen safely as long as the transmission rate in the overall community is low enough. And he, this is a quote from him. If community transmission reaches the point where you are having multiple separate introductions to a school followed by outbreaks, it's really hard to see how a school can remain open. So again, I know that this is, it's just very complex for the school committee. I don't know if Matt wants to weigh in on that oh so briefly, but that's what we're working on, on why we keep bringing all these topics up. Because it's still as much here as it ever was. So. And I don't know if you have any questions about any other details, but that's the general gist.
I've been getting updates from Matt and based on, what's the metric uses? Percent positives, I think it is.
Matt, Matt's here and he's just under the header of Tommy because I'm now completely my father and can't forget how to change the name to my own. And so the, the, we have a couple of metrics that we're reporting. The one that lines up with the state guidance is essentially a calculation of the daily rate per 100,000 people. We sort of combined the two towns to calculate that. And, and so I think our last number from this week was 2.1 where the guidance is less than four and you're sort of on track for in-person school from Dusty's standpoint. I think we're taking a little bit more conservative approach in the district, but I would say on track. And then the other measure is the test positivity rate. And I think that we've been doing very well there generally running less than 1%. Although when we had kind of an uptick at the end of July, we're up at 3%, but again, not when you generally want to see less than 5%.
And just to confirm any positives we see in the school, we reflected in these stats that are emailed out, correct?
So I can't disclose where positives are just because it's protected health information, but so those would be in the count. We would likely have triggers if there were cases in the school that would trigger action, even if the community spread was still low. So for example, if we had three cases in the school and that was the only three cases in the district, we might still be in a good range, but we may still need to take independent action to mitigate that risk.
Okay.
His data though, is he can tell you is, is combining the Dover and Sherburne data.
Yep.
So that's, that's the big help that it offers.
So I think it does that. And then also because for both towns, the counts tend to be so low, some of the calculations when your value is less than five, it helps a little bit to be able to combine the two towns just because each of our race with a pretty small population as well. And I think relatively good local disease control right now.
Dover Sherburne combined its population around 10,000 or 11,000 total, I believe.
Yep. We've been using 10,000 for the calculation because it goes into 100,000 real easy. And I didn't go to DS, I need all the help I can get.
You got an MD overnight on your screen names.
I'm getting upgraded all over the place. Once you meet me, it'll be perfect.
Any questions on the board?
I do have to say like, I feel like the communication from the school has been, as a parent of two middle school children, like the communication from the school has been great. Matt, I commend you so much for dealing with those large, very large school committee meetings that have 500 people or so on that are all, I mean, I know, I know every decision, nobody's going to be happy with every decision that's made. And it's, I just want to commend you Matt for the work that you've done with the school committees.
I would say it's been a pleasure and I, you know, it's kind of nice to, usually I just have people mad at me for septic system. So having them mad at me for something different is kind of a nice change of pace. And I think the school committees have also just done an incredible job in a very challenging circumstance. And you know, as a, as a Pine Hill parent, makes me incredibly grateful with people across the board, working so hard to make this work for everybody.
Hey Peterson from the Dover Board of Health has also been involved.
Incredible. Oh, yeah.
And we have Jerry Clark, the Chair of the Dover Board of Health on the call tonight.
So before we move on, I just wanted to mention that on the website, particularly on the science tidbits tab, COVID science, we're, we've been posting more and more technical documents there. So there are a few very interesting ones that have gone up recently. If you haven't had a chance to look. So.
There.
Including pooled testing strategies. So.
And just to remind anyone, if you want to ask a question to one of the presenters, use the raise hand feature on your, on the Zoom software here, on Zoom interface. If there aren't any questions at, Darryl, do you want to continue on to item number five, which is discussion on the drought conditions in Sherburne?
Yeah. So give me just a moment. I'll share my screen if that works. Okay, claims I'm sharing.
Yep.
Okay. Terrific. So I had sent information to you earlier. I hope most people have already heard through other channels, either Nextdoor, information put out by the state news programs. We're in a drought, even though we've had some impressive storms recently, but still have drought conditions. And I just want to bring this up because I, and no answers have to be given tonight, but do we want to think about how we want to communicate this condition out to people in town who may not really know what should they be doing about it? So here I've just posted a question that appears on the state website, NASDAQ gov website about private wells. And there are a variety of Q and As there, and this is just one of them, talking about, yes, we have an impact. And certainly in Sherburne, we're all sharing the groundwater resource that we have. So this is a topic that the Board of Health talks about with some frequency, but I did want to just bring it up. So without really belaboring that too much, you know, just keep in mind, do we want to just post more information about this? Do we want to have some sort of message boards around town, just reminding people to not be doing outdoor watering? Do we want to do some other kind of, of efforts? But we've invited Gerald Clark from Dover here. He's the, he's both the, oops, hold on a second. He's the Chair of the Dover Board of Health and he's also on the Water Resources Study Committee there. And they've initiated a very innovative hydrology study in town. And so we thought it would be helpful to have him give you a really quick overview of it. Because I think there's also information that they're learning there that basically can apply to Sherburne because our situations are quite similar between the two towns, with the exception that they have a public water supply. So water companies are serving roughly a quarter of the town, I believe, in Dover. So quarter to a third, somewhere in there. So I'm going to turn it over to Gerald to just briefly let you know what they are doing in Dover because this started recently and it's something that's going to be going on into the future and gathering data over the long term. So Gerald.
Darren, could you do me a favor and unshare because I'll flip flop back and forth between what you summarized here, but I do have one other slide I want to put in.
Okay, so. Are you?
Yeah, I know.
At which point do you want me to stop sharing?
Um, you can do it right now because I can come back to those, hold on a second. Which, which, I have to kill my mic because otherwise you're not going to hear me anyway. I didn't have a chance to test this out with you because I couldn't, there we go. There it is. Um. You know, let me just show you why we came to this point in Dover. And I'm hoping you see this. I don't, let me get.
Yep.
This is annoying. I'm not sure. Do you see this screen?
Yes.
Why?
Okay. Very quickly, I, and some five or six years ago, I started to become very concerned, more so than previously. Oh, you know what it is? Let me kill this. No, not on this. I don't know where this is coming from. Oh. To make a long story short, we started to see some serious problems. I just list them here. That the planning board started to see perennial streams and seasonal wetlands disappearing. And the furthermore problem was that once that happened, properties that could have been somewhat controlled in development now were no longer. We also started to see other problems. So having said that, I'm going to come back to what Darryl has here. And I'm going to take this one. So. About five years ago, I started to do a few lessons for people on hydrology. And, and also on groundwater. And that.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry.
Discussion with the Select Board. We didn't really get anywhere because there wasn't any community support. I then did a whole series of lectures as part of the learning, lifetime learning. And that drew 30 some people each time and we started to get some support. To understand that we were no longer a community in which water was absolutely unlimited.
Whoever's noise that is, like I can't even focus at all.
Those lessons were.
That background noise is really, really bad.
Spiders are available.
I think it's a speaker.
Water law here in Massachusetts and elsewhere in the country.
David, can you mute him?
Oh.
Hey Jerry, I think you may have two devices going because we're getting feedback from your, maybe your second device. We're getting kind of a screeching feedback. So people can't hear you well.
Yeah, that's the kind of feedback you get when you have both a computer mic on and, and you're hooked in by phone.
That's right. Let's try again. Try again Jerry, see if that worked.
David, unmute him.
I am. He, he has to do it.
Okay.
Jerry, will you unmute yourself?
I sent him a text also.
Okay.
Does anyone want to move on to agenda item number six and then come back, come back?
Yes.
Okay.
We might have to do that.
It's a Board of Health.
All right. And I'll note that the Board of Health, all the, the four Board of Health members are present. So we have posted our meeting as well.
Okay. So we're going to move on to agenda number six. We're going to come back to number five and we kind of get our technical glitches in order. Number six is to consider a joint appointment of Matthew Bever to the Board of Health, I believe, and Darryl can give more detail. There's an opening, current opening in Board of Health and.
Yes.
They've interviewed Matthew Bever and are recommending his, his appointment. Darryl, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes. Okay. Actually I'll turn, uh. I'll turn it over to Matt since he, Matt.
Darryl, this is Jeff. I think you need to vote to open your meeting or open your meeting officially, your posted meeting.
Okay.
Did you already do that? I don't think you did, did you?
I just said that we're all here and present and we have a posted meeting, but I will officially open the Board of Health meeting of August 27th, 2020. Okay.
Sounds like a call to order.
All right. So, all right. So I'll have Matt Vitale introduce the candidate.
So just in terms of background, we had an interim resignation.
Can we stop sharing the screen so we can, that's distracting if we're moving to another. Thank you.
Um, so we had an interim resignation on the Board of Health, which has left us understaffed. Dr. Beavers is a neurocritical care physician at Brigham and Women's Hospital, as well as a grant funded scientist and has expressed interest in the position. He is also a parent of school age children in the district. And so I think he's joining us as well. In addition to his extensive qualifications from a scientific and clinical background, I would add that if we as a town cannot have Dr. Beaver's approved Beaver permits, we have done ourselves a grave injustice. And so with, with that, I would add to my enthusiastic support of his consideration. And I think in the context of the schools would highlight the time sensitive nature and urgency of kind of trying to get our board back up to fully staff as we are likely to be entering a busier fall after what was an already busy summer.
Yes. And I will add my support for his appointment for the rest of this year until.
Diane, can I ask those process question?
Yes.
The first year I was on the Select Board, Mike Jamo and Paul impressed upon me the importance of posting positions for volunteer and temporary appointments to elected positions. Have we posted this? Because if we haven't, what I wanted to suggest is the, Dr. Beaver's resume is incredibly impressive. What I was going to suggest is naming him as ex officio for two weeks while we post it. We just never know who in town is interested and I have trouble thinking that anyone's resume is going to be as impressive as Dr. Beavers, but I, the, I want to make sure the process of posting this was followed. And I guess that's a question for Dave and Diane.
It was the position. Can I talk? The position was posted by the Board of Health.
On the 20th of August.
Right. So it was, it was up.
I can't see.
Enough time.
Just because.
Yeah.
Dorothea, could you please mute? Thank you.
Is the posting, help me out, is the posting one week or two weeks?
Typically we, we post our boards and committees for 30 days.
Yeah.
Before we get an application to bring, before we bring the applications to you.
I, I agree with Chuck that Dr. Beavers, your very, very impressive resume. And I think that makes sense, but I also want to follow the, the rules of posting for the right amount of time. I think we shouldn't just rush to appoint somebody without following the protocol that we, that we have set up.
According to what we read from the state, it's seven days. It's just after 30 days, then a different process might go into effect in terms of how it's done between the boards.
I don't, I don't want to.
According to MGL.
David, but David.
Um, I think I had already explained this to the, the Board of Health, the seven, the language that specifies the seven days is very loose and can be interpreted either way. And whether it's seven days posting the position or is it seven days notice of when the appointment's going to be made? Paul may want to toss a coin on that, but it's, that, that seems to be the issue with the seven days. But it's certainly not the 30 days that we're, we normally do. Paul seems to want to add.
Yeah, go ahead Paul.
Yeah, a couple of things. First, the purpose of the seven day rule in the statute is to notify the Board of Health so that they can be present when we fill the position. The statute talks about when the Board of Health can participate in that vote and when it can't participate. That's the focus of the seven days is essentially notice to the Board of Health. Separate from that, something that, that I have fought for, for at least a decade or more on the board. And the board has agreed that when we do appointments, we want to be sure that it's not an inside job. We want to open it up to the community to allow anybody who is interested to apply. So that there is an equal opportunity. So that there is an equal opportunity for everybody to be part of this process. And like everyone else, I am very impressed with the resume that's before us. In fact, I believe I voted to license him as a physician in Massachusetts as part of my role on the Board of Registration in Medicine. So I have no doubts about his qualifications. But we have to respect all the other people in the community to make sure that they have an equal opportunity. Particularly important in a elected position. Because if somebody feels left out, they can always take out papers and run against the person we appoint. And then we've got the very unpleasant situation of an election. It's better to follow the process. Let everybody have their opportunity. And so I would request that the actual vote here be deferred until a thirty day period has passed from August 14th, which would be September 14th.
So my one concern, I'll let Matt speak first.
The comment I would make is, again, I just want to be specific in the language, Paul. It sounds like the thirty days is a Sherburne practice as opposed to regulatory requirement. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's pretty widespread throughout the state to do this, but it's, it's a a choice by the Board of Selectmen. It's a policy of the Board of Selectmen.
It's a local regulatory policy.
So what I would say is like, as a volunteer board member spending between twenty five and thirty hours a week trying to support opening schools, the prospect of having less support than I could have to satisfy a local regulatory policy in the middle of a pandemic feels difficult. I'd love to understand more what the ex officio position would allow because I would certainly love to see our board able to be fully staffed, fully ready and kind of equipped to start the school year, which will begin prior to your next, that September 14th threshold. And so that's sort of the struggle for me. I'm certainly happy to do it, but I'd love to be able to have all hands on deck in an exceptional circumstance.
And let me, a question. How is ex officio different? Can it not vote or what, what's, what essentially does that mean? Or does it convert to a traditional after two weeks?
I'm with Paul that I think we need to actually see, give the thirty days and see who actually applies for this position. I think we can't just, I know, I'm sorry, Matt, but I, I think it's important that we have diversity on boards and we have an opportunity to see all candidates and not just appoint the first person who applies. I know Dr. Beavers is very qualified, but I also think we need to follow the process and I agree with Paul on this.
Can I just ask a question though? This is Lisa. We haven't had a contested Board of Health election in three years. And I just think, you know, the amount of time that many of us have been spending in excess, in addition to our regular jobs in this era of COVID and the need to have such close attention and constant vigilance about reopening our schools and having those kind of interactions, it's just put a lot of stress on the existing board. So the sooner we can spread that around to very competent candidates, the better. And I just think, you know, I hear what everybody's saying. I want it to be fair. But on the other hand, we haven't had another person, you know, raising up to compete with any of us over the last three years. And with the amount of time that all of us are spending with COVID, it's only an additional, you know, kind of commitment for people. So I just want a reality check on, on these concerns.
And that's why I propose
I would like to actually
That's why I propose a middle ground naming as ex officio, which means he can do, attend meetings and just doesn't have a formal vote until the thirty day posting is is finished.
I will also mention that other people have contacted the Board of Health interested in serving on the Board of Health. However, they're not quite ready and they're not quite ready for the kinds of duties that Dr. Beavers is ready to take on.
Can we see those resumes as well, Daryl?
Before we go on.
Are you, instead of just giving us one, can we see?
They did not want to formally submit just yet because of, frankly, because of the qualifications of the candidate we already had. I did invite them to do so in time for this meeting, but.
Do you think that's fair not to, not to vet every candidate?
I mean, I would say I certainly have talked to multiple candidates. I had a wide number of people who looked at the ask and said, oh my God, I want no part of that. And so I certainly talked to at least two other candidates before who kind of reached out and said, you know, what's going on here? The candidates I got, you know, basically said, I can't take this on right now because I'm underwhelmed. I'm overwhelmed with everything that's going on. And so and, and for me, these were not people who responded to the posting. It were people who heard about the resignation. But again, I would say like neither one of them was saying, hey, I'd like to do this. And then I said, you shouldn't do it. They said, hey, can you tell me about the Board of Health? And I told them and they said, yeah, I'm a, I'm a good hard pass. Not that it's not lovely, Dr. Beavers. You'll love it. It's fantastic. But I think lots of people have had that.
Watch him, Matt.
To work a lot for no money and lots of angry people. And there's been a pretty short line so far.
I just, I just, my concern, I've said this before with the Conservation Commission and a few others, I don't want self appointing boards. I want us to vet candidates. And I, I think Dr. Beavers is very qualified, but I also don't think we should only see Dr. Beavers. We should see the candidates who are all applying for this position if we're the ones that are appointing.
But I think you were talking when you say Conservation Commission, that's a board that you primarily appoint, correct? That's not an elected
Right, but I'm saying we're also appointing this position. If we're appointing it, why do we only get one choice instead of other people? Daryl just said other people have
And let me finish and explain further. I said that those folks are very interested. But in comparison to the work that Dr. Beavers is prepared to do, they did not want to step into that position. They would like to do other things to help the board in general, but for what his skills are and where we see him applying them to help the schools, these people thought he was the better person to do this and wanted to see the schools succeed and that be as good as it could be. It was, I thought, a wonderful offer and we will certainly engage them in the future if the opportunity comes up or they could run next time. But this was their choice that I was very frank with them about, okay, great. Here are the other people who are interested. So.
Okay, now I've got to jump in. I just want to, I think we have a good dialogue there between George and the board and the health board members, but I think we're being just a little repetitive there. And I still want to get an answer to my one question. I think a question is to Chuck. The only difference in the ex officio, whatever it is, is that they don't vote for two weeks. I think that's correct. I do want to ask Daryl and Matt, is there an important vote coming up in the next two weeks? Would this really impact anything if they automatically convert over to a true board member after two weeks? You know?
So I think the only substantial, so for next week's meeting, we have one reconsideration for a subject system that has had its plan withdrawn. That will be a moderate discussion. I think the largest discussion will be on next week's agenda is talking about extracurricular activities and sports for the school opening. I would say from my standpoint, I think that what we need, again, I'd love to get kind of where we can get to. I don't think having another vote, always voting on that will be the thing that makes that successful or unsuccessful. I think it's more a defined role with, with kind of boots on the ground that can help do the things we're doing. So even if we have a non-voting member at next week, I don't think it will compromise our ability as a board to function. But I do think that having somebody who's in a defined role, who can speak with some authority about this is what we're doing. This is what I'm working on. And I can speak on behalf of the board, even if it's not a formal voting role, would be helpful.
Yeah, see, I like, I like the idea, Chuck's idea of the, of the whatever role, ex officio.
They dragged me into the Sherburne Board of Selectment meeting.
Hey David, just a quick tweet down there. I like, I like that because, you know, it's our support. He's on, he'll automatically go to a full time member and we're not compromising any precedent. So you don't have to compromise any precedent.
No, Eric, it's not automatic. What we're saying is we defer a decision on who the permanent member will be for the thirty day period. And in the meantime, they should invite him to be at their meetings and to participate fully. Because I can project that he is most likely to be appointed. But I'm not prepared to vote in violation of longstanding policy that took a long time for this board to get to where we allow all our citizens an opportunity to participate in their own government, sort of fundamental democracy 101. So the, the argument that's being made that, you know, we need him immediately, I would say, go to work. Let him go to work for the, for the Board of Health. As whatever title you want to give him, associate or as, as a volunteer, whatever, he can start work tomorrow. But the actual election of a board member, I'm not going to vote one way or the other until the thirty day period is over.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Paul? It seems like this is a Sherburne practice, not a, not a requirement. Is it possible we could change that to twenty five days? We don't meet until the 10th of September. Someone said that it was August 15th when it was first posted. So in other words, that would be September 15th. So if we aren't able to promote him to a full member on September 10th, we won't have a chance to do it until September 24th. It seems like twenty five days would be plenty, given the likelihood of getting another candidate.
My question is, are we actually going to see the other candidates? Because what Daryl said was she's talked to other people, but they haven't been presented to the board. This is my, this has been my problem with other appointments that we actually should see the candidate, we should see the candidates, not the Board of Health.
They chose not to submit at this time.
Okay.
That was their choice. I encouraged them to do so.
That's fair. I'm just saying, if we have actual candidates, they should be submitting applications to the Board of Selectmen, not the Board of Health.
Right, they're not candidates. They were people, people that were reached out to, but declared.
And I want to clarify, I want to jump in that, that, because I, I agree with you, George, particularly with, like ZBA and conservation. But this is an elected board and I believe this vote, is this a combined vote from the Board of Health?
Yes, it is a combined vote. And just to let you know, in the past, because I've been through this before with appointments to the Board of Health, I think twice. And both times, the applications come to the Board of Health. The Board of Health does not hide anything from the Select Board. We share it with you. Just as we share Dr. Bever's. And then it's a joint vote between the two boards.
Yeah, so this is
Joint discussion and vote.
This is different, George, and I think Conservation Commission. It is a little apples and oranges. And given the fact that this position is reopening up for election in about, I don't know, eight months or whatever. I think it's also
We have a pandemic.
I just, I
Well, but I would say I think the ex officio, from my
My sentence, if that's okay. So I'm actually prepared to vote in favor of this because I appreciate the thirty days. I appreciate, I don't, my number one thing, I, a lot of my votes is about precedent. I don't think in those times we had, when we have to fill an elected position on another board during a pandemic, that I'm willing to bet that's not going to happen in the, in the near future. And I do think there is some importance on keeping this up, not revisiting it again in twelve, fifteen, twenty five days, whatever it is. And I maybe will, I'm willing to actually vote in favor for his, his, what do you call, appointment today. Yeah, go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah. With, with all due respect, I disagree with that. This is, I want to echo something that Paul and George both said. There was a Warren article a few years ago about qualifications for the Board of Health. And there was real concerns about, one of the issues was of boards not self selecting and being self continuing. So I, that, I am happy to go ex officio. I think that, that solves everyone's needs, but I think the policy, I actually opposed Mike and Paul on this initially. And they convinced me that this makes sense. This should be, it's a process question and I think it's a process we followed in the five and a half years I've been on the board. I think we should continue doing it. I think there are good, sound reasons for it. So I agree with Paul and George on this.
Even though we can't do it by the next board meeting, we have to wait till the 27th?
And that would have been posted how many days?
Twenty five. That's what, that's what my question is. Our next meeting is the 10th of September, which will be twenty five days.
David, did you have something to add?
I wanted to ask Daryl, on what date was it actually posted by Board of Health?
I believe it was the 20th.
And where was that posted?
On the town website.
Okay. So we would count from the 20th.
So I am not, I'm coming from a regulatory board and I do think process is very important. I'm not opposed to it on, on that level. And maybe the ex officio will work. I am disappointed with some interpretation that the board is not is trying to take control of this by itself for inappropriate reasons. There's that I'm having a hard time with.
I would also like this point is a vote, like, like we're not passive participants in this, like we have agency in this. This is the process we're filling. Is that correct? Like this is not select board is voting on this and we're participants. We are co-voters. Is that correct?
Yes, we are co-voters.
I think it's
And, and so from my standpoint, I'm totally happy to think flexibly and to be respectful of the longstanding democratic traditions and the concerns that are raised. But I want to be really, really clear about that we are not kind of asking to say, hey, you know, this is our process. It is totally appropriate for us as a voting board, a voting participating member of the process to participate and to advocate for what we think is the right thing to do. And while I tell in cognizant of the concerns that you guys raise, and I'm happy to think flexibly about how to solve that, like that totally works for me, but I want to be really clear that we're not the same as an appointed board, even if this is the appointment process to phone a bike. Is that, just in terms of thinking about future gap, does that sound right to you guys?
That, that's, I agree, Matt. Like I don't mean to compare you to an appointed board and I'm sorry for that, but what I'm saying is I think we should stick with our, I agree with Paul and Chuck. We have a process of a thirty day posting for things and we should give citizens a chance to apply for it within those thirty days. Not
Yeah.
Not right. I understand we're in a pandemic and, but I also think you do have a very well functioning board with the four members that are remaining with
But I'd say, George, like I'm drowning and I need help and I see somebody who can help me. And so from my standpoint, I think I can get that help with an ex officio appointment, if that makes it feel more consistent from precedent, like that's the part that I most need. And I need to be able to say that Dr. Beavers can act on our behalf and can participate in those discussions. For, for me, and also look
And I'm okay with that.
I'm also on the board. If Matt's commenting, I'd love to say something. I completely agree with the members of the Board of Selectmen. There's no reason that we can't comply with the meeting law. Ninety, more than ninety percent of towns and cities in the state of Massachusetts have three members of the board. We have a quorum. I don't know why we can't follow the, an objective process. I think it's embarrassing. Really.
I, we need to, I would say I'm working two full time jobs and more right now. And so is Matt.
We're all
Need assistance. No, you're not all working forty hours a week. Fifty hours is what I spend on this.
I, yeah.
Ex officio sounds great.
Yeah. And also remember, if we are only four, that means two of us can't converse and like have a dialogue offline about things.
On the open meeting law, I think it's actually as a five member board, it stay, even if one position's empty, correct me if I'm wrong, if, Paul. But I think you're still a five member board, so two people can still converse, even if it's only four active members.
Is that correct? I, I need clarification on that.
That's correct.
It's an incentive for Dr. Beavers that ex officio members get two X the pay that regular members get.
It's a good deal.
Vera's awesome.
If I could make one more
A little bit of order here. Bring a little bit of order. I'm going to make a statement, but one quick comment from Paul and then let's, I want to make a statement. Yeah, Paul?
Okay, what I, what I want to say is that virtually every board or commission that comes for an appointment can make the same argument about how the same argument about how urgent things are. I know in the, in the past, the Board of Appeals came and wanted to get somebody appointed, and they had all kinds of pressing cases that needed to be done. I'm sure the planning board could come and say, we got important things before us, we need to get this thing done right away. The Conservation Commission certainly could come, make the same argument, compelling cases can be made all over the place. It's a real slippery slope. If we get down trying to judge, is somebody's case more compelling than somebody else's case? We either have a rule or we don't have a rule. And if we have a rule, we can stick by it. I don't see there's any harm because I'm sure that Dr. Beavers is going to be more than willing to volunteer to assist the Board of Health. And I welcome that. And as I say, I've already voted for him in the past on the Board of Registration in Medicine. He's a good guy. But there's a process. There's, and that process is important to the community as a whole.
All right.
Please, let's stick by it.
I move to appoint Dr. Bevers as an ex officio member of the Board of Health until such time that the 30 days has passed and vote, vote as a full-time member. All right, first and seconded. I'll, I'll do the select board's votes, and I assume, Daryl, you can do the Board of Health votes. Let's see, Jeff?
Question?
Sure.
I didn't quite hear that vote. I put him as an ex officio member.
Until until such time that 30 days has passed and we can meet again to appoint, to appoint him or another candidate.
Okay.
As a as a full-time member.
So clarifying that, though, is 30 days, then 30 days. So you're saying, what date are we saying, September 24th or September 10th?
I think it'd be September 24th, because if they posted August 20th.
If you're gonna trim to the 10th, you might as well trim to today. So I think it has to be the 24th.
The 10th is 22 days.
Yeah. Yeah, so. All right, Jeff, how do you vote?
Could you read the motion again, please, Eric?
I'll read it. It's just out of my head.
Say it.
I, I vote to appoint Dr. Bevers as an ex officio member of the Board of Health until such time that the select board can meet after the 30 day period is up and vote him or another qualified candidate as a full-time member.
Okay, it'll be the select board and the Board of Health voting.
Yes, yes, well, but I can only nominate, I can only do this at least.
Right, our motion, all right, I, I, and Chuck seconded this already, so I vote aye.
Okay. Uh, Paul?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye, and I want the two Brigham Women, Dr. Matt's, to know that I'm on the, been on the board of the New England Baptist for a number of years. So, you know, we're gonna be making a run at one of these seats, so.
Yeah, my wife's a Brigham, so be nice to us to get your drugs.
Totally happy, anybody who wants it is welcome to it, and God bless them.
George, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Daryl, I don't know, how does what does the Board of Health vote on my, on my um motion and second?
Make their own motion.
Okay.
So would anyone like to move the motion that the select board moved?
Don't move.
I'll second it. I'm going to say, Daryl, aye, noting that this is in the interest of process.
Lisa, aye, same. Rebecca, aye.
Matt, Matt Vitale, aye.
As opposed to practical during the pandemic, but
And that does it, because there's only four of us.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Welcome aboard, partially, Mr. Dr. Bevers, or Beavers.
Should we go, Daryl, like, are we released?
Yes, yeah, so the Board of Health meeting can come to a close, although we are going to go back to drought, it looks like.
Yes, uh, we ready? What was the fellow's name from Dover again?
His name's Jerry Clark. He's just microphone. He told me he changed his microphone out, that was the problem.
Okay, is Jerry ready to present?
Let's see.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, I, I would prefer to be able to show you. So I have the same slide as Daryl had extracted from ours, but I have something that she also asked that is recent that she does not have. So if you don't mind.
Yeah, please, I think it's David that controls who can share a screen.
He can, he can put it up under the screen.
So I, I'm not sure when the mic problem occurred, you'll tell me. My major point in this slide was that we had to get residential concurrence on going forward. And therefore, there were a number of areas that we felt that were necessary to instruct and educate people on. If there's any question, I'll be glad to talk to this slide, but I think for purposes of alacrity, we can get to the real meat of the discussion. Okay. We had planned on more wells, we ended up with 14 working wells. I point out that they had to all be on public land so as to not expose any resident to the discovery of any contaminant, not that we expected it, but this way we avoided the whole problem. We have both pressure transducers in there to determine the depth. We have, that's, those are automatic, but we cannot pull the data from them without raising the device. We're only doing that once every six months, but we are in fact dropping a gauge down at the end of every month to see the depth level. We have five stream flow monitors for the same purpose. We're concerned both at what's at the ground level and what's below ground. We also have been doing quality testing, checking for contaminants, just as an aside. We don't have any contaminants show up other than unfortunately, the occasional location of nitrates. I'm sure you see the same problem because of the issues that relate to septic systems. And the one thing that has come up consistently has been except what would be perceived as excessive salt, but there is no maximum, a minimum contamination level for salt. So some people who are near, in our case, Route 109, which is a state highway, have complained about excessive salt. I want to show you this. And let's get what has happened here. Where is the control? Okay. This is as of the, as of yesterday. So you can see, we have a clear drop in water levels for almost all of these wells. The anomaly is this one well, I, I think I have a reason, I don't know what I want to spend any time on it. But you can see this fairly consistent drop, that's not unexpected as the season proceeds. But some of them have been very significant drops. There's one more well that I don't have here, it's not ours. It's the one USGS well that has been in the center of Dover for over 50 years. It's in a location in which there is absolutely no water drawn for almost three quarters of mile in any direction, because everything surrounded it is on that one public water supply company that draws water from some other location. It therefore historically has been exceedingly stable, going up and down a range of no more than two feet in 50 years. However, if you look at its standard deviation of variance, there have been in the last 20 years, three times that the drop from the historical average, the arithmetic mean, has been more than a half a standard deviation drop. Once was in 2003, we had a drought. The second time, you probably will guess, was in 2016. And the third time is this year. I would suggest that that's fairly indicative of a problem, particularly in an area where there is no draw whatsoever, that would be causing its otherwise decline in water level. We've seen streams dry out, that's been a problem. This particular year in the meetings that I attend at the state level, several of us were strongly pushing the drought management task force, which had spent two years cleaning up its act, just as an aside, the September announcement in 2016 that the state was in drought was two months behind time, because in that year, up to that year, the state really did not have a methodical way of determining drought. Two years of discussions have produced a very clear mathematical way of declaring drought. And so therefore, this year, we had a vote almost a month and a half ago. There was some political action that went on as to what part of the state was going to be declared in drought and not. I think the chair didn't want to cause any problems, so only the western part was declared. And of course, then we got some water, heavy water, and, and the question sort of dissipated. This time around, the vote on, which was two weeks ago, resulted in a declaration less than 24 hours later, which I was shocked at how fast that went through. My perception, as is others, is that this drought is a month earlier than the 2016 drought and has the opportunity to be more intense now. Today, here in Dover, we just received just under one inch of rain. Though, so therefore, our deficit, which had been almost three inches between the various several precipitation events, which have been exceedingly localized, which is a growing issue, we're now about an inch and a half in deficit. If you look at this, the NOAA statement as to Massachusetts as a whole, it's unfortunate that it is using Logan Airport. It, Logan Airport is the worst possible place, that's what they use, according to the NOAA, Massachusetts is seven inches in drought, in deficit. The truth of the matter is, it's actually less if you look at other states, uh, excuse me, other stations. One of the big problems that Dover and Sherburne have is that we don't have a monitoring station in either town that NOAA can rely on. There are places all around that have occasionally reported, they're inconsistent. And I will mention one other thing that's been obvious in the last five years. I've had discussions with the folks from NOAA on this over and over again. In the past, we all, I think, were used to storm fronts coming in with the Westerlies and passing through almost naturally, almost on a parallel line from the western part of the state across our area as it headed out to sea. Something has changed dramatically, and many of these storms that come through sort of bifurcate somewhere to the west of Holliston with a major piece going north of us, north of you, heading and then dumping rain in the Somerville Cambridge area. The other piece tends to go south of us and goes over Plymouth. And that has been unfortunately, a fairly consistent pattern, which has meant that you and we aren't getting the same precipitation as is being reported for the generality of the state. One of the possible reasons is what's driving these huge hurricanes. And that is the dramatic elevated temperature of the Gulf of Mexico, which causes a plume that actually comes up on the western side of the Appalachians. And then at, as the Appalachians drop off in height, moves, because it's now under the influence of the Westerlies, comes over Massachusetts. If there was any question as to how we went from one and a half cases of triple E on average a year since 1928. And last year, we had 12. It's because last year, there was a very obvious consistent movement of that hot humid air from the south coming out of the Gulf of Mexico, bringing with it the Florida songbirds. It's an arbo virus, and that is the primary source of the disease. So there are things that are changing. It's, it's fairly clear that we have to make adjustments. We're going to continue to monitor this. It, I will tell you, it took us a year to get this public to understand that New England is no longer swimming in water. And if you want to get the history of all of this, as I say, there's a lesson plan and videos that I did several years ago that are available. I don't know if you have any further questions. Yeah. Mr. Chair, I have a question, Dr. Clark.
Yes, sir.
Um, of the 13 wells you have in the Dover hydrology study slide, are any of these the well that is at Elm Bank that you share with? No, no, that's not ours. That's just, I'm sure you are aware of the Act of 1986 of the legislature. It was an explicit act gave the towns of Needham, Wellesley, Natick, and Dover the explicit right to draw from there. Dover in 1990 was offered the opportunity by the town of Natick, who was desperate to gain access to that water under their rights, when they lost two of their wells that are, were in Natick, offered Dover the opportunity to participate in that wellhead and to have a main, a force main brought into the town center. Dover Select Board was against it for fears of development, and it was not done. It is a Natick owned, Natick well system. By the way, just so you understand, it is not absolutely consistent. There are periods like this past two weeks, when the DEP tells Natick they cannot pull as much water out of that well for fear of the levels of the Charles River. I think it was a mistake because it turned out the USGS measurements were off, but that is theirs, we have no access to it.
Any other questions from the board before we go to public? All right, if it's possible to turn off the share screens, I'm gonna go to the public, and I want to be able to see the raised hand features. Okay. Any questions from the general public? Well, I guess I have, I have one question, and I probably goes to Daryl. Just as a, as a take-home lesson here for the average resident, you think that irrigation is probably one of the areas we can best kind of save and conserve and minimize our impact on the overall groundwater resources of town?
Yes, it's, unfortunately, the time people would most want to irrigate is when they least should irrigate. Really, if you happen having a, the proper watering regime of a lawn over time, where you don't water a little bit every day, that promotes very shallow root growth. Grass is made to go dormant, so it will come back. Just as the Serengeti comes back each year with the rains, right? Turns brown, comes, becomes green again. So the grass will be resilient, and it's just represents a very large water loss to be doing that. And you are essentially taking the water away from others who need it for drinking.
May, may I answer your question with some actual evidence?
Sure, Derek.
Um, one of the difficulties that Sherburne and Dover both have is that we do not have customers who have meters on their wells, pretty obvious. However, Dover, whether it's good or bad, has a predominant public water supply private company that services some 650 or so households, about 26% of the town. This is their consistent withdrawal. I don't think there's any question that you can see that their dramatic increase starts as May proceeds and continues all the way through, this is September. This is a consistent pattern. It is what is discussed in the drought management task force level at the state, that irrigation is an dramatic increase in water consumption. And as Daryl used my example of the Serengeti, it was in a wonderful program about the colors of earth. And it went to the point that the Maasai tribesmen drive their cattle north in, at, when the Serengeti goes dry to get grass, and then there are the sudden rains that come in season. And within a matter of week, the Serengeti turns green. Door, grass goes dormant, for the most part, it doesn't die. Door, grass goes dormant. For the most part, it doesn't die.
All right. Thank you very much. And if
Tom Trainer has a question, I noticed.
Oh yeah, can we turn off the share screen again? Uh, oh, there it is. Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Tom Trainer 97 Washington Street. Uh, Dr. Clark, we're, uh, thank you for sharing the, this new information. I was able to see the posting of your extensive hydrology report. A couple of months ago, I was very impressed. And as a, as a resident here in Sherborne, where we all depend on groundwater a hundred percent. I, I more and more have been concerned about the ground ish, groundwater issues, not only quantity, but also quality with some things going on. Uh, general question to maybe uh, both Daryl and the Board of Selectmen. I know we have a bunch of positions or committees in town that ostensibly focus on long-term groundwater concerns and issues. We have water commissioners. I think the groundwater protection committee still exists, at least on paper. Are there any uh, people other than very busy Board of Health committees and conservation committees and select boards? Is there one, anyone in Sherborne focusing on our long-term groundwater concerns?
I mean, there are the water commissioners, but give without a, a public water supply, they kind of have limited purview. That'd probably mostly be the Board of Health. I'd actually have direct regulatory authority to take action on an issue with um, with groundwater levels. I don't know if Daryl wants to add anything different.
Uh, so the ground, I was on the groundwater protection committee for many years until I ended up on the Board of Health. So the groundwater protection committee hasn't been active in a while. It was an advisory committee. There wasn't a lot of appetite unfortunately in town to listen to the advice that we provided to the town. So I think they were important issues. Some of that, just about grass going dormant that we had experts who were able to inform us about lawn care measures and all the rest and it was a very difficult thing to get across in the town. They are voluntary measures. There are a lot of people who are interested in that. Uh, we did want to see a lot of those things practiced on town lands. Uh, so that would be good. It's also good as a demonstration project. For example, Marblehead does that in town and it's been inspirational for others to see what they do and then be able to mimic it. So.
Um, well, that's great, but I, you know, I don't want to take up any of your time here, but I would ask the Board of Selectmen to uh, find a resource within this town to uh, stay focused on the groundwater concerns.
Uh, Marian has a question here also. Uh, thank, Tom, your input's great, by the way. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Yeah, another question, just to comment. I wanted to back up what Tom uh, just uh, alluded to. Uh, on the master plan committee that put together the water section of the master plan, which we thought was kind of the, the most crucial part really of the natural resources section. Uh, one, one of our main recommendations, as you'll recall, was to reactivate the groundwater protection committee. And I think given our current situation, it's really time to do that.
I will mention that a regulatory change that the Board of Health made recently was to not permit second wells on properties for the purposes of irrigation unless there was a very compelling reason of some sort, such as agricultural purposes.
Yeah, Paul's recognized.
So I served on the groundwater protection committee for a long time and one of the things that the committee did was formulate a groundwater protection by law, which went to town meeting and was adopted by the town. It does seem to me to make sense to take a look at that groundwater protection by law to see if it needs to be updated with new information, with the recommendations of the master plan and with the the risks that come from the contamination of, of the general chemical site and other things that didn't exist at the time when those of us who are on the groundwater protection committee were drafting and perfecting the groundwater protection by law. So I concur with the notion that it would make sense to reactivate that committee. And amongst their charge, I would suggest taking a look at towns groundwater protection bylaws and to take a look at other uh, features of the zoning bylaws and the general bylaws to see if there are things that should be added that would better protect our groundwater. At the end of the day, we drink our own groundwater. So it's very important that we as a community invest in protecting and preserving that water.
Okay. So is that a motion to um, we uh, to go, what is it? To have maybe the town administrator uh, reach out to the uh, last known members of the groundwater protection?
Second.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'm in favor of it. I don't know if we have to make a motion. I'm in favor. I'll second it.
Okay. Maybe, you're right. I don't know if it requires a vote.
I think Jerry has another point he was going to make too, when you're ready, Eric.
Who does?
Jerry Clark from Dover.
Okay. So I don't see the other hand there. But before I, then before I move on past this, um, is there any opposition from the board on uh, to have David reach out to whomever the last known members of the groundwater protection committee were? Um, I suspect, I think, I think I had to have one water commissioner on it. And then there was um, just other um, whatever you call it, ad hoc members on it. I can't remember how it was set up.
No, it didn't require a water commissioner, but I think there are only two people left in town who are on it.
Sounds like you and Paul, but okay.
No, me and Blair Van Bruin from the last iteration.
What, what are your thoughts on Paul's idea of reactivating the groundwater protection committee, Daryl? And looking at existing bylaws, including the ground, the existing groundwater protection bylaw?
I think if they got more backup from the rest of the town, that would be fantastic. And the Board of Health, I think, would back them up. Uh, also maybe after this um, vote or decision, if we could talk about what do we want to do about the drought? That would be good too.
Well, yeah, that, that's kind of, that, that, because I know you're presenting about the drought conditions. And I know like under the Water Management Act, um, you know, any, any whatever non-registered well or what's called licensed well, I think, uh, public water supply well, you know, is required to have certain uh, conditions, including like, what is it? No irrigation, stuff like that, you know, just something more public water supply. And I guess I'm kind of trying to get to a bottom line to this presentation here. Like, you know, should we, there's a bottom line coming out of this, the reactivation of the groundwater protection committee. Is it a recommendation by select board for no irrigation? Is it a mandated uh, no irrigation supplies? That's something we can and can't do. I guess that's what I'm trying to get.
I, I can't mandate, but go ahead.
Uh, one, one thing I think we should make sure it's including a diversity of opinion. I think we want to make sure somebody like the DPW directors on like this with his work with the trees and um, you know, let's, let's not just make it a Board of Health thing. Let's, let's have a diverse group of people on, on this uh, on this committee. Because, I mean, there are multiple aquifers around town and I want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're, we're being practical about this. And I mean, one of, one of the, Daryl, just a second. One of the things that I think attracts a lot of people to Sherburne is the fact that they do have private wells and they do have the private use of water on their properties. So I want to make sure that that's something that's considered.
That's a good point. And I also don't think much I want, how much we're going to resolve something here. I want to, Jerry, you had your hand up. I want to at least recognize you there and your
Okay, I just, just to clarify something here. I, I think most of you are unaware of changes in enabling legislation. First and foremost, one thing you might want to look at is the building code requires the installation of cisterns. No one seems to be doing that. I, I plead guilty here in Dover. We've been trying to get that enforced. But as to the issue of water restrictions of, a number of us spent uh, two years and it is now sitting in the drought management plan that was issued in September last year, appendix G. I urge you to look at it. It recognizes that unless water commissioners actually have the rights over a substance, namely a municipal water system, the rights under the law fall explicitly to the Board of Health and the bylaw template that is there is something I think you want to look at. It goes to the question of a town bylaw that would allow for the declaration of a drought and the enforcement of a reduction in outdoor irrigation. The second thing you should be aware is that the state passed a law now almost two years ago that in theory is requiring anyone with an irrigation system, once it's installed or if it's maintained, that it must have a measuring device on soil moisture content. This is not like rainfall devices which failed. This is a soil moisture content device to stop the sprinkler system from operating. And the, and the obvious thing you should really do is publicize it's a waste of your water to be watering during the middle of the day because it evaporates. And I would disagree somewhat with your, I think it was Mr. Moore. The water that's under my land really doesn't belong just to me. It's shared with everyone in that aquifer. And the proof of that occurred twice in this town, most recently at about a month and a half ago, when that water company, the public water supply company, which overdraws in the process of overdrawing, well, of course, what do you expect would happen? They pulled in E. coli, they pulled in a coliform and they had to in fact shut down operation for three weeks. And the residents who were customers suffered. It is water under the ground is really a shared resource. And the state law, just for the record, with a 2016 and December 2016 SJC ruling, the state law has moved away from the water under my ground is mine.
That's very
One, 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 just clarifying thing on that. I said there's multiple aquifers in Sherburne. So not everybody's sharing the same aquifer. So.
But, but those, everyone in a given aquifer shares.
We just got, at some point, we just got to move on. And that was great level of detail and great amount of information. I somehow don't think tonight we're going to coming in doing something, uh, researching the state law and what we can and can't do to private properties. But I'm trying to get step of how we get to an end result that is a solution here rather than killing the same discussion over and over.
No, I agree because that's, I mean, the groundwater committee used to spend a lot of time on these issues. But I would like to just correct one thing because it's put out there as a fact. There are three edges of aquifers that touched Sherborne around several borders, but we do not have an aquifer. That's, we are different than a lot of towns. We don't have a major aquifer that we can draw from. We have bedrock wells. So that is just the one thing that's different.
All right.
That was said earlier.
I think we should end the discussion, but you know, I know, I think it was 1995, we had wells that went dry. And I think Jerry has told us that I believe three wells in Dover have gone dry this year. So I and education is important to let people know that they may lose their well.
Okay. So what do you suggest for a, a next step here, Jeff?
Well, I think the idea of uh, reinstituting this water, what was it called? The Water Commission or Water?
Protection.
Yeah. The best thing, but we need to maybe consider just putting a notice advising people to, you know, not use their irrigation systems if at all possible.
No, I actually agree with the notion of adopting a bylaw that would authorize a cessation of irrigation. DEP has been pushing that for all the communities in the state. There needs to be no further drawdown from aquifers for a lot of different reasons. There needs to be more centralization of that. So asking people is fine, but that's not where DEP is at. You need regulatory authority to make sure that it doesn't happen.
And I think that would be kind of, I, um, I'd want to see that as recommended by a committee that studies, studies that, such as the groundwater protection. I wouldn't want to make that decision.
I, I wouldn't be, I, I think, I think that's overstepping. I think, I think people have private wells and if some people have a lot of water resources on their property and you're affecting people's property values if you tell them they can't run irrigation systems. I, I, I fundamentally disagree with this.
I nominate you, George, to be on the groundwater protection committee.
I doubt Daryl will allow me to be on it, but.
So let's do that.
No, I think it would be good to have the diversity of opinion and I also think that you would learn a lot.
Um, so I would like to come something out of this presentation. I think it's been good dialogue. Um, you know, we, the conditions are getting worse, not better. And frankly, by the time we get some type of solution, it might already be winter time with snow pack. But I at least want to start, get going some direction here. So is it just simply a, a general consensus among the board that we re-energize the groundwater protection committee? See, is it in that if need but, if need be, maybe look at a, um, look at its constitution, how it's formed? Do we reconsider that constitution at our next select board meeting? And to see, um, if we want to accept nominations on it after plus 30 days of advertisement.
Well, one thing I would add to that, Eric, is, you know, we've commented before about the, how many committees we have and how many volunteers there are to support them. If our assessment is that we can't find three or five members, then I think we, um, you know, we should, you know, that, that's something that we should explore. I think it's a great idea. But if we can't find three or five members and folks who are willing to volunteer and do it, then you know, we don't need another committee that's not, you know, adequately staffed with volunteers.
Pretty urgent topic, topic though. I'd just like to take a second to thank um, Jerry Clark from Dover from sharing this information with us also.
Yes. Thank you, Gerald. And I think it's also good to know that we are going to benefit from the study that they are doing in Dover over time. So we're getting free information, really.
So Chuck, I heard, I heard your point of concern there. And uh, I guess do you have an alternate idea? Do you just want to at least move forward with this idea? I'm just again, trying to get to a solution here.
Well, I think we should explore it, but I think one of the things we need to explore is, you know, Tom Trainer indicated he was interested in it. Are we, will we find three, four, or five people that are willing to, to volunteer?
Um, and, and as Daryl suggested, I would be happy to sit on it, even though I, I know she thinks I need to learn something about it, but I, I would be very interested in, in being involved as an alternative opinion than just like shutting down water. I think I would, I would like to, uh, I'd like to be involved with this.
All right, David, for next week's agenda item or 10th agenda item. Um, if you could look up whatever constitution there is for this, is there any kind of like, um, whatever, whatever you call it, you know, document to determine like who's on this, what's on it, whatever else? See who the last members are and let's uh, bring it before the board. And if the members are still active, then engage them and uh, and bring it up as, as a discussion item on the 10. I think that's probably the, the best step we can take right now.
Okay. We'll chase down the charge in the, when it was established.
Okay. If we have to, you know, reconfigure it or whatever, then whatever steps we need to do that, you know, was it only two members on it? Was it whatever else? Did it want three to one, five? You know, maybe even I'll, I'll step on it. Okay. That's it. Thank you both very much for that presentation. And it's like we're going a certain direction with that. Um, so lastly, almost lastly, we have uh, agenda item number seven, uh, sustainable building design by Passive House. Uh, presentation from Aaron Gunderson sponsored by the Energy Committee.
Hi, this is Michael Lesser from the Energy Committee. Um, I'll just give a brief intro and then let Aaron take it away. The short presentation tonight is part of a broader effort and commitment by the town and the Energy Committee to promoting energy efficiency in the town's homes, businesses, buildings and schools in order to address climate change and save money over town, over time, excuse me. The use of energy in our homes is a major source of greenhouse gas emissions and it needs to be significantly reduced and it needs to be significantly reduced or met by renewable sources. With your support at town meeting, we are now starting on community choice electricity aggregation as a town-wide effort that will greatly increase renewable energy use. We are now also beginning to promote sustainable building designs for all projects and homes in town. Large projects obviously provide important opportunities to avoid greenhouse gas emissions for a long time to come. The presentation tonight is about a high-efficiency design approach called Passive House that is increasingly being used in our region for multifamily projects and that is cost-effective and should be considered for all projects in town. Passive House Massachusetts is a group of designers, builders, and others promoting this approach. Our presenter tonight is its executive director, Aaron Gunderson. So he's ready to present. I see him there now. And I guess you can want to take over the screen or you decide when you want to do that.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Thanks for the introduction and thanks for inviting me here to, to speak to everybody. If there's any volume issues or anything, folks, just, just let me know. And I know it's been a long meeting for everybody and it's a late evening. So I'm going to be fairly quick tonight. I'm going to just have kind of a short presentation to introduce you all to Passive House, talk about some of the basics of what it is and how it's being used around the state. And then I'll just be here to answer the, the questions that you guys have and maybe talk about some more specifics depending on what, what you want to know. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and we'll, we'll take it from there. Let me make it bigger there. All right. Great. So everyone's seeing this, right?
Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you. So, so yeah, this is just introduction to passive house buildings. And the, the first takeaway is contrary to the, the name, Passive House applies to all buildings, not, not just homes. So these are examples of buildings throughout the state. We have residential projects, of course, that are passive house buildings, but also larger multifamily buildings, office buildings, schools. There's even hospitals around, around the world that are certified passive house buildings. So it's a lot of different, different projects. Though here in Massachusetts, we mostly are seeing residential buildings. Historically, that's single family, but now it's expanding into this world of larger multifamily buildings. So there are a few offices as well. So, so what is Passive House? It is a performance-based building certification standard. And it focuses on the dramatic reduction of energy use for space conditioning, so heating and cooling. And that's the primary focus. As we'll talk about there, there are performance requirements for overall energy. But the, the main kind of niche of Passive House is on that space conditioning energy. So what, what you see by doing this is a dramatic reduction of overall energy use, reduction in the corresponding carbon emissions. You also see improvement, improvement in air quality, so indoor air quality, health of the building and occupants and occupant comfort. Also greater building durability, they kind of last longer. You also see resilience to, to major weather events, lower operating costs, of course, with lower utilities and lower maintenance costs along with that with some of the equipment and a pathway to net zero. So Passive House buildings aren't by default net zero, but they easily can become net zero buildings. So specifically, what do I mean by some of this? So energy reduction. What Passive House achieves is about a 90% or greater reduction in heating and cooling loads compared to a typical building. So by typical, I'm, I'm just sort of, I mean, more of like a conventional code-built building. That would be sort of your, your conventional building. And this is giving about 90% or greater reduction in those heating energy loads. Or sorry, heating and cooling. That translates to that 60 to 70% overall energy reduction. So when you factor in everything else, water, plug loads, appliances, you're getting about a 60 to 70% total energy reduction as compared again to kind of a typical building. And then we. So we tend to see implications associated with your projects. This, this graph you're looking at here is just showing a comparison that was done of Passive House projects and their, their EY or their, their energy use intensity, which is just a way of measuring like total energy use by size of the building. So the, the first bar graph there, the first bar are buildings built to the stretch code in Massachusetts. So your, your community, like many others, is a stretch code community. So you're building already beyond code. And you're seeing kind of where the energy use of those buildings is, is lying. All the way to the other side on the right where it says FIES plus, those are Passive House buildings. So you can see Passive House buildings are, are falling right around a 20 on this mark. Stretch codes are up to around a 40 or 35. So a pretty big reduction from stretch code already. And if you're looking at those typical code buildings, it would be north of here, it would be off the shark. So this is just meant to demonstrate what we mean when we say energy reduction. We're also seeing improvements in, in air quality and in these other issues. So sort of where this comes from is there's continuous ventilated air being provided to these buildings. So they do have a mechanical ventilation system, so that's delivering filtered air. So that's part of the reason they can have such high levels of indoor air quality. There's also an increased use of non-toxic and, and lower toxin materials. You see more consistent room-to-room temperatures and even more consistent temperatures within rooms. So you're eliminating drafts by windows and, and things like that. Then they increase buildings being either uncomfortable or, you know, having condensation and mold issues. You see much, much less of that. Increased natural lighting as well as quieter acoustic conditions. There's a lot of insulation used to keep heat in that also tends to keep the noise out. Then durability, resilience. So what I mean by this is ability to shelter in place so you can maintain indoor temperatures for a longer period of time. Say if you have a power outage in winter and your heating system goes out, that heat will actually stay for quite a while, long enough for you hopefully get it, get it fixed. You're also more durable, long-lasting construction. So more resistant to mold, rot, pests, all these other things that can damage buildings over time. These buildings tend to be much more resistant. And a lower reliance on mechanical systems, so less things to go wrong. So what, what are we actually looking at as far as Passive House? What does it mean to be a Passive House building? So there's performance-based criteria for heating and cooling demands, the amount of energy used for heating and for cooling. There's requirements for whole building air tightness. So how tight is the whole building envelope? And there's requirements for overall energy demand. So how much bill, how much energy is the overall building use? And then there's other criteria that are related to things like ventilation rates, moisture and mold management, quality assurance, some of these other kind of details. But the, the main performance requirements are energy used for heating, cooling, and overall energy. How this is achieved, so kind of the basis techniques are using more thermal insulation than you normally would and generally using continuous thermal insulation. So sort of wrapping the whole building in a, in a thermal envelope, eliminating thermal bridges, so places where heat can kind of transfer through that insulation. So wood studs, steel, steel beams. You may not get rid of those in project, but you're minimizing their, their impact to, to conduct heat. You're having an airtight envelope. This is probably the most critical element in what we think, anything like a system or an element in Passive House buildings. Most important one would just be that airtight envelope, that air barrier system. Also using high-performance windows and doors. Windows can open, they're operable. You're just using better quality ones, so they're better installed, better sealed around the edges and reduce thermal transfer through them. Optimize solar heating. So say in the winter, you want to increase sunlight in the building to bring in some, some heat from the sun, things on those lines. So balanced ventilation. So I mentioned there are mechanical systems. So we do have ventilation systems and mechanical heating and cooling systems provide what heating, cooling is needed. But you're using more efficient methods to do that. So these are sort of, you know, the basic features. Depending on what questions you guys have, I'll, I'll dive into more of these, of course. But I just wanted to introduce the topics. The rest of the slides I have here are really just examples of projects. I'll go through them quick and then depending on what, you know, questions you guys have, I can go back to some of these and talk more about them. This is the distillery. It was the first multifamily project in Massachusetts. It's in South Boston. Multifamily Passive House really started in, in Europe and then came to the US and in other states first, Pennsylvania, New York, the Pacific Northwest is sort of where we saw a lot of them. So Massachusetts was sort of later to adopt Passive House projects on this scale. The distillery was the first one. And now we're sort of seeing a, really just a huge, huge takeoff of these type of projects. So this one is just about to be finished in Cambridge, Finch, Cambridge. 98 units of, in this case, 100% affordable housing. This is a Passive House project there. This is Mattapan Station, another affordable project going up. So they, they're just starting, I think, the construction phase. Here's a, a project in South Boston, again, very close to the distillery. This is a mix of affordable housing and market rate, but mostly senior housing for the affordable side of things. This is going up as well soon. This is one in Hanson. That's affordable housing. This one's 48 units. It's kind of a, a lot of different types of these multifamily projects are going up. We're seeing market rate, affordable, a lot of these mix where, you know, part of it, it's affordable, part of this market rate. Northland is going up in Newton. This one just, was just approved through, actually through a ballot measure in the city. But this is going to be 280 units of Passive House residential housing. The overall development is much larger than that. I think it's around eight or nine buildings, but they're, they're building three of them for a total of 280 units to Passive House. And that's a mix of market rate and affordable and some mixed-use stuff on the first levels of these buildings. There's also another development that's exploring this in Newton as well, similar size where they'll have, you know, a portion of it being Passive House. And for these sort of larger multi-building developments, that's what we're seeing. Some of the buildings will be Passive House, not necessarily all of them. One residence hall as well. So this was just completed in, in, and last year had students in it for the first time in the fall. No longer right now, but one of the first university residence halls to be built to Passive House. So different types of buildings. In terms of costs, I want to bring up a little bit and I can talk more, you know, depending on the questions you guys have. Passive houses, in terms of like single-family, smaller buildings, it can be pretty, pretty expensive. But when you look at these larger projects, it's getting, getting closer and closer to sort of your typical construction costs. What we're seeing currently for these multifamily projects is about a 0% to 2% cost premium. And that's sort of the sweet spot right there, about 2%. We've seen that demonstrated in, in multiple other states that have done this. So Pennsylvania has sort of done the, the largest amount of these multifamily projects. And they are, they're at 0% to 2%. Here in, in the state, the Mass Clean Energy Center did a design challenge where they've awarded funds to eight different projects that are going Passive House. And their target for, for receiving those funds was a 3% premium. So all those eight are so far under that. So that's sort of what you think of typical cost increases. There are now incentives to offset that. The biggest ones are coming through the, the Mass Save program here. I'll come back to that. But so the Mass Save program is now offering incentives for all buildings of five units or more. Those incentives, so you can have a feasibility study. So whether the project is going Passive House or not, you can have this feasibility study to see what, you know, what, what, what could Passive House do for the project? How, how could that work? That's provided through here. And then incentives during, kind of throughout the project for certification, pre-certification, energy modeling. And again, I can answer more questions about this for folks who have them. Now I want to go back to this slide. Give me a little example where kind of what's happening throughout the state in, in relation to sort of policy and Passive House. So the, the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level is now awarding consideration for Passive House projects in their funding plans. So for their funding for affordable housing projects, they're awarding five extra points for Passive House projects. Where any projects that's, you know, pursuing Passive House gets extra consideration in those funding rounds. In the city of Boston, in particular, their, their Department of Neighborhood Development design standards now include Passive House as the method for large buildings to meet their new zero emission building standards. They also use Passive House modeling for their energy modeling for those zero emission building standards. Somerville just introduced a zoning ordinance last December, just about six, seven months ago, that includes Passive House as a way to qualify for density bonuses. And they also have certain master plan districts, around like Union Square and a few places in Somerville where they're actually requiring Passive House or a comparable standard. I see a note here. Hold on. I'll have to bring that up in a moment. Cambridge has it in, in their zoning ordinance as internal pathway for their green buildings. And then Newton, where I mentioned a couple of those larger kind of big developments are going up, they actually included Passive House in their latest climate action plan as sort of a citywide initiative. Then they have a local green group, Green Newton, which is incorporated into their, sort of their, their building development standard. And they were one of the groups that was pushing that and working with those, those developments like that New York and project I, I showed you. In terms of things like the energy code, Massachusetts at the state level is exploring the, updating the stretch code to include Passive House and net zero buildings. That's, that's in progress. So not, not done yet, but we're hopeful that in the future that will, will be as part of the stretch code. And then Mass Save, as I mentioned, has incentives for multifamily Passive House. We're hoping those will expand to other types of buildings in the future, but they started with those multifamily buildings. I'm going to just put up this slide here just to show you what those incentives are. If folks have questions. That's, that's all I have as sort of the slides. As I said, I have a lot more I can share with you. I have more information I can show on that screen as well, depending on what questions you guys have. But really, I'm just here to sort of introduce an idea to you, let you know how it works, how it's worked in other cities. I'm excited that, that your town's, you know, considering this, that there's a development considering this. We've seen it explode here in the last couple of years. And I, I think it's really going to be more common everywhere real soon, especially as we start to meet some of these climate goals, you know, by 2030 and 2050. So.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Do you mind, can, turn off the share screen just so we can see?
Oh, yeah.
Leave it on for one second.
Yeah, sure.
I want to explain one thing, Eric, about this. I want to add one other point before you get to your questions of that the capital, the upfront costs.
Oh, yeah.
That they're trying to do a 3%. That one of the issues that came up when we talked about with the developer based on is that is also the significant energy savings that, on the operating costs that, that many, in a simple project, in a simplistic way, easily counterbalance those upfront costs. It just gets more complicated in a rental system where you basically have different people paying for different things and how much the utilities are paid by the renters. And, but they, there's the issue of whether people are willing to pay more rent or, or buy, pay more because the operating costs are so much lower for these units. So that, that easily counterbalances that. And the only other point I wanted to point out here is looking at the incentives here for pre-construction. That's part of the discussions with based on is to, at least as a minimum threshold, even to go the whole way would be great, is to at least do the initial upfront feasibility study and modeling and pre-certification. Is even if you get to that level, it gives you all the hard data to make a true decision about what are the incremental costs. It's a very, there's detailed work to figure out what it is that the additional costs are going to be and what the savings are going to be. And there's, and just to get to the design pre-certification, there is a very significant incentive. Most of the study costs are paid for by the consultants, obviously not the counterpart time. But also the pre-certification, $500 a unit sums up to quite a significant amount of money for a project of that scale. So that, so that's sort of like a minimum threshold so that you're really making a, having a good basis for deciding whether to move forward with, with Passive House. And it also gives you the basis to get other incentives, even if it doesn't proceed. But that was part of one discussions before. We've talked about at least doing the initial upfront work of pre-certification.
Yeah, I think, no, thanks for adding that. And I think you're exactly right. When, when we talk to, you know, developers or asking about this and exploring it, we push them all to take advantage of that feasibility study, even if they're not, you know, sure Passive House is what they want to do. The incentive's there, use it, take advantage of this. And the pre-certification, just if it isn't clear here, though, that's the benefit you get regardless of whether or not you achieve certification. So even starting to go through this process, if you don't ultimately achieve the, the goal of Passive House, there's still a lot of benefits out of that, that result from it. And that net performance bonus there on the bottom, that can be awarded if you do not achieve Passive House. So if you come close and you still, you know, are, are having energy benefits beyond what a stretch code building would have, you're receiving a bonus for that. And as, as terms of your costs, as you mentioned, the utility savings, you're right, are dramatic. If you're saving, you know, 70% on your energy use, that translates to 70% on your utility bills. I don't mention a lot with multifamily buildings because as you mentioned, the, you know, the savings where, you know, you may have the tenants or where do those savings go? For single-family residential projects, those savings are huge and offsetting the costs. And obviously the owners keep those savings. But with multifamily projects, it's sort of a little bit harder on where those savings go. But they're, they're, they're enormous.
Very good. I guess can we turn off the share screen?
Yep. Oh, thank you.
So from the board itself, Chuck, did you have a question?
I had a, a statement and a question. I, I think most people already realize this, but Mass Save, you know, the vast majority of housing in Sherborne. when you're in a single family house, Mass Save has good evaluation programs for individual homes. The swap out lighting, swap out and have incentives for replacing old inefficient appliances. So it's not just for incentives for multifamily houses. I suspect most people are already aware of that, but just would want to add that. And then the question for Aaron is the certification program I'm most familiar with is the old Green Building Council, the L E E D, which has been around forever and seems a little outdated. I, could you just comment on what your group and would do, where that L E E D certification is in terms of state of the art incentives? Because I I suspected a lot of states like California, Massachusetts have programs that go way beyond what the L E E D certification is based on.
Yeah, so so L E D or L E E D or LEED was one of the first green building standards, you know, decades ago. And it's still around, it's enormous. It's a lot of cities and towns have incorporated that into their into their zoning plans or other other code things for for a long time. But it's pretty broad, it covers a wide range of things, not just energy, but it talks about water use, the site, transit, the emissions as well. So I mean, it covers a lot of things. So passive house tries to focus on that energy part of it specifically. As you mentioned, LEED is, I don't know if it's outdated as much as it just is, is broad, it covers a lot of things and it doesn't narrow in on any of them necessarily, whereas passive house narrows in on that energy use part of it. And passive house projects, many of them are also LEED certified. If you achieve the passive house certification, you have pretty much received all of your points that you get for LEED under that energy category. You would still get points for, you know, you would have to find other ways to get the other categories. But that energy would pretty much be the earned from from a passive house project. So they're complimentary that way. The passive house takes it to sort of that next level of saying, well, let me put it this way, if you look at the actual performance of LEED buildings right now in Massachusetts in terms of energy use, that E Y number showing you, they're not going to be all that much different than a stretch code building. Maybe some will be a little bit better. Some might be a lot better, but others are going to be right there about stretch code because it's not performance based. You have sort of a checklist of things you do. So what passive house tries to do is get around that by saying this is going to be performance based. We're going to take a maximum amount of energy you can use and that's it, that's the standard. How you do that is a little bit more up to you.
Um, oh, there, George, please.
Yes, Aaron, thank you so much for this presentation and I really appreciate it. I was excited to learn more about the passive house construction. I work in real estate and this is, this is really, really informative. My question is, I saw you said the 2 to 3% of construction cost, which which is significant when it's a affordable project where I know they're like a 40 B project, they're limited to their profit as it is. So when you add construction costs, there's that element. But when you get into the single family homes, like where where does the 2 to 3%? Like, how big of a project does it have to be in order to achieve that 2 to 3%? Or does it go higher as you do less units? Because I know there's some people in town that have advocated for smaller projects and I don't think passive house is going to be as cost advantageous if you're going to do it in a smaller project versus something like the 120 units that are proposed by based on.
Yeah, no, that's that's a great point. And that number that I always mentioned, that 2 to 3% and average for multifamily projects, that that is, you know, for a lot of maybe 20 to 40 unit projects fit into that category. But when you get into more of the smaller, maybe four unit buildings, six unit buildings, there's still cost savings there, but it's it's not as dramatic. A lot of that goes to sort of a lot of the extra costs in passive house go to the building envelope, you know, more insulation, the air, the air barrier system. So as you get a bigger building on the inside, you have a lot more square footage compared to that that wall system. So just a bigger building, you have, you know, less, less in the walls than you do in the in the square footage of it. In terms of multifamily building, you also have more people, more appliances, more electronics are producing heat. And in a normal building, that all goes out the windows and the walls, but in a passive house, it stays in. So it's it's important. So the more people, the more appliances, the more heat you have. So in a smaller project, you have less of that. But I will say we have been seeing a lot of the kind of four to six unit projects going up in in Boston, where actually I'm I'm kind of zooming from today in the the Roxbury, Dorchester neighborhoods. There's been a couple of design and build firms that have been working on passive house and passive house inspired projects of that size. When I say inspired, I I mean ones that, you know, don't, aren't certified, but are using the same strategies and achieve about the same level of energy performance. They just don't go through the the certification process. And they're doing that at a reasonable affordability level. I it might be 5% rather than 3%. But when you, projects of that size, a lot of the costs is also, it's it's so dependent on what else folks are doing. You know, what kind of siding you're using, what what kind of countertops you're putting, all these other things drive the costs more than any insulation or your windows do. I hope that gets to it, yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you.
And I will say, just in terms of the incentives, right now there are five units or more. So even those smaller kind of six unit projects were qualified for those mass saving incentives. And we're, I can't say, we're just hopeful that they'll be for smaller projects in the future as well, but they're not there yet.
There's no other questions from the board? Is there any question from the general public? The audience, if you could use the raise hand feature. Have you lost a lot of people? Actually, I got a pretty good population. Now I scrolled over, it's pretty good. I was, I'll ask this one thing. So Michael, you've, you've been engaging with Baystone, correct, on on this?
Yes, they're still work, they're still working on it. They said they get back to us in the next week or so. They're talking to some of the designers and contractors that have been doing passive house that they know. And they were going to get back about how that, how it's coming out. No.
Any other next steps for the community?
At this point, I think it's just a matter of factoring in it. We haven't figured out how to, to what extent we apply some of this on a more, on the individual, some of the issues around sustainable design for the individual residents. That's a whole other thing of the promotion, the kind of thing like Chuck brought up of people making sure they really do Mass Save. And then there's other things about Heat Smart and Heat Pump programs. But that would, that the committee is looking into doing as part of its broader efforts. And just a matter of factoring in as other projects come into town that are multifamily of this scale, that this is again a relevant topic to bring up and talking with them. There's the main, it's the main operating principle at the moment and see how it goes.
Definitely a very relative topic. And I thank you both. Thank you, Aaron, thank you, Michael, for coming and presenting for us.
Thank you so much for having me here. Happy to, you know, talk to any of you guys and and answer some more in-depth questions. Michael has my contact information. Feel free to share that with anybody who who requests it. Thank you, guys.
We could talk more about it depending on how the other project goes too. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda number eight. This is our usual agenda item, consideration administrative items and routine business. The finance director is not in, but David, was there anything, did she give you anything to report?
No. No.
Okay, let's go right onto town administrator then. Is there any town administrator reports?
No.
Okay. Your job's easy. How about select board members? Is there anything a select board member would like to report on tonight? Paul?
It would, it's generally good practice for Board of Selectmen to, after a town meeting, to go through the warrant of the town meeting to see what things the Board of Selectmen need to address, if any. So it might make sense to have some consideration to having a discussion about what happened to town meeting, what the votes were, projects to go forward with, and what are we doing to carry out our responsibilities to the town and to the voters to implement the actions that they voted at town meeting?
Such as the Article 12 action we took tonight.
Yes, but this, this is, you know, another 20 some odd articles out there.
Yeah. So you proposing for agenda item next week to go through more thoroughly or have?
Yeah, yeah, just kind of have it all in front of us. Let's go through it and see if there's anything we can do to help implement any of the votes.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good idea. We'll put that on the agenda for the 10th, unless David isn't look for, how does the 10th look right now? So make sure.
We're good.
Okay, very good. We'll do just. Okay, and a select board reports or questions? All right, if not, we'll adjourn. Let's take a motion to adjourn for open session to enter executive session for the agenda items as previously read by the town administrator. As the chair does see fit, that is that these are appropriate for executive session. Is there a motion in that?
I may just move.
Second.
I have a thought.
Yeah, Paul?
Which is to reverse order because we're doing the the library last, maybe we should do the library first, get that piece done and then go on to the second executive session.
I think the library might be a little bit of a lengthy discussion with the with the, I don't want, I don't know how much I can say, but you know, one of the subjects that came before us. I think there might be a bit discussion on the library. And I know there are several people here for item number one. So it's my preference to keep it in the order as presented.
Okay.
At least I have a motion in a second. Jeff, how do you vote?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
Chuck?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So I guess David, I'd be probably have a couple of people here for the second agenda item. I have a few more for item number one. I guess you probably know who the players are, if you can do what you got to do.
Yep, give me one minute.
Yep, absolutely. And do what you guys.